......... Yes.
I'm sure we have six present with one non-president, the councilable that post secretary told me is not going to be up for personal matters. So at this time I'd ask for an excuse.
Say it.
Most of you in the south, I don't think they ever say aye.
Aye.
Both? Mr. President, surely I have six ayes, one ayes, and one approval. Um, before we get on to consent agenda, we've got a couple of things to mention. The charter review three minutes will be moved to the courts of committee. So moving it there. Next thing, the city manager tally has pulled out this part of, um, the resolution number queen nine. Um, my mentor's saying he's been thought if he's had it or not. It was a minute clock. He was part of the first original, yeah, I know.
So, yes, we, uh, just present, uh, for the, uh, we're gonna see this part from the two, uh, uh, in the, uh, we're not doing a lot of that. Uh, two, uh, five, uh, two, uh, percent, uh, uh, so we're talking about two percent of, uh, uh, uh.
Um, that's that will move on to consent agenda. Say it. Mostly second, and there's aye. Both? If, uh, six ayes, one ayes, and one ayes for consent agenda. Um, moving on to regulation of business, we, this, we have distinct priority this evening to help you ask on board. Uh, Ian Menke.
Yeah, uh, appreciate, uh, having the opportunity to, uh, uh, come and come here and leave, uh, a new conference, kind of exciting time, uh, uh, as you, uh, I think the business committee, uh, to hear Menke, um, three hundred and four, we, uh, uh, went there, there you go. And so, uh, the, 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 the time, the, uh, you can, uh, uh, do, uh, uh, one person and just, uh, bring it here, uh, and, uh, if you're listening, uh, uh, you just, you just don't worry. Just for the evening, so we're done, um, and here you go, the, uh, the, uh, the state office, you know, and, uh, not to be, uh, very early, and, uh, not to, uh, this area, and the, uh, listed, uh, there's, uh, uh, the, uh, lifetime of background, uh, in the United States, uh, this, uh, uh, and, uh, everything, uh, just support to, uh, during the, uh, very, uh, uh, let it work out, uh, to the people, uh, we have worked, uh, the, uh, and, uh, with, uh, the, uh, 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 uh.
Welcome to the first part. Congratulations. I know you did a great addition to our department. I only want to make one recognition, you see the red mouth thing? Bring your practice ticket. That's it. Welcome aboard.
Thanks for your service today, Ted. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Keith. Um, moving on next. I have, um, presentation this evening, and I'm gonna go into that next. We don't know that who truly runs the city, it's not our city manager, but Julie. I already know, Julie does a great job for our community and for our city hall. Um, she's always trying to advance and improve herself. And I have a very nice presentation this evening to hand out to, uh, Julie. It was from Prama Oregon Public Risk Management Association. Always a lot. To Julie, on behalf of Oregon Prama Board of Directors, it was a great pleasure to take that I take, this opportunity to recognize this successful completion of risk management certification program. Oregon Prama, in partnership with C I S, is proud to offer customized risk management program that assists individuals with the tools and training needed to identify act or potential liabilities that a public user may incur, keeping risks to a minimum and reducing possible, possible public liability exposure to help reduce insurance claims and insurance costs. Effective risk management saves money, builds employees, rounds saved lives. Thank you, congratulations, eighty three Vice President, Oregon Chapter of Prama. Would you like to come forth to your question?
Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I'd just like to say this night to everybody.
Thank you.
Like I said, because the next one's out. Um, at this time, any recognition of business, any particular, like, what, what council they heard? Okay? That's been an old business, new business. For information only, fire hall property. I think we have, uh, here, I think, uh, Teague said, uh, Teague, we had back, I didn't even see a back there, Teague.
So that it is, it can store, the, um, for the sale, but, um, but they didn't consider that, uh, unless they thought to figure that out. So if they didn't pick an asset, you can not activate it, then, um, then you'll find, um, how it's going to be, and that this property is that, uh, good. You know, there's, uh, things that are maybe dated, and they're listed, and then you say, um, you can agree if they're many times, and if they start to add time, whether you're gonna do, obviously, they're, uh, they need to, um, hold in the favor if they're, they didn't get access. And I don't care if they're talking to the senior, or that's the thing, it's, uh, it's that, uh, I think that's, uh, uh.
You know, sir, uh, is the hundred dollars, and you're gonna continue? I don't see what it says in the dollars. No. Okay. Well, the reason it started this way for the people that wanted to get in those days, it was when we rented the city, before we transferred to the district. That property was the city's, and so it was basically, I guess, the fire station, although I think the fire after the district, I don't remember the timeline on that, but, so that might be the reason, it was the way it was, or is, or was, but, so, anyway, that's, that's the way it was.
And I, uh, uh, the reason, the reason why I moved that one is because, uh, the more than the city, and then, then, uh, the, 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 and so the city, uh, the some dollars go and block, you know, to block that, but they couldn't sell it in a month. And so, that kind of, you had your own district, then they got the best, uh, fire, uh, uh, the town, and they got a five hundred thousand dollar policy, uh, so the, uh, the property was all the, uh, uh, so, 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 uh, the property was one thing. And this one was a one dollar a year, and then like two thousand one, I think, uh,
Looking for more stable funding, you can fire.
Then it was a hundred dollars a week, but the property didn't, uh, and so that, that's why we're, uh, and that was the property that was, uh, the property. The property was, uh, 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 and the good after the city, for, uh, 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 so it's thirty years now, and it's, uh, 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 so, we found that all, uh, 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 uh,
I agree with that, clean things up, I know you guys are doing a building out back, and here several years ago, when we approached the city, is the preliminary discussion with Carol and all them, uh, there was a tremendous amount of snafus, and you had a hurdle to run through because of the situation we were in, with the state, and liabilities, and leases, and, and so, I think, I, I have to say, we need to wash our hands of it, and, and, and the property. I see for you what you're talking about.
Uh, 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 I listen to, uh, 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 rates in general, is they can go up and they can go down. Um, so, really, it's, it's trying to find the right timing and, and hope you get the, the best luck.
Personally, it's going to go up.
I, I think that there's not a lot of room for it to continue to fall.
So, Brandon, is there a cost for, uh, working with the company to establish the bond? What does that cost?
There is, uh...
$3,000.
The bond council is listed in the, um, in the overall proposal as, uh, $35,000, um, and it's all roped into the, basically the sale. Um, the... I can see if I can pull that for you quickly, um, but I don't remember what the, the price is for the actual broker, basically. I'll see if I can pull that up, love. If anybody has any other questions.
Any questions?
So, when will we know about the other possibilities that could be out there that would subject [inaudible 00:05:11].
Um, we would, the only thing that we have seen at this point, um, that would potentially be more advantageous is the state's, uh, refunding option. Um, that we should know, they'll do the analysis toward the end of February, not February, sorry, November. Yeah, sorry. Um, basically, we've, we've filled out paperwork to say, yes, we're interested, um, and we want to see what it looks like. And so they will crunch their numbers. They're not planning to go out for sale until February, but they'll be able to give us a, a synopsis of what it could do for us, and then we can evaluate at that time whether it's, it's better for us in the long run or not. Um, but again, then it's kind of the same token. So, when they go out to sale in February, whatever that interest rate is at, that's, that's what we would end up with. Um, there are... It's $50,000 in fees related to cost of issuance, um, and then the underwriter, uh, there's a $41,000 fee based on the size, based on the volume of the bond.
Any other questions?
Does this [inaudible 00:05:15]. Going out on any other bonds in the future for [inaudible 00:05:18].
It does not, uh, not directly. So, um, our current city policy says that we can only incur debt up to 3% of our total market value in the city. Um, so, that, that falls right about $21 million in, in overall debt that we can have on our books. Um, and so at this point, so the water treatment plant is certainly coming up, um, so we already need to push, um, or to bring to council, sorry, um, some adjustments to that policy in order to incur additional debt at this point. Um, but no, it doesn't preclude us from going out as far as the state is concerned or, or other rules, it's just our own internal policies that, that are currently...
Really good.
Right, this is existing.
If we saw a saving, uh, [inaudible 00:06:02]. Would that go towards this to pay off quicker, or some other debt that we have to go quicker?
If we had saved, sorry, I missed part of that.
The saving, you're saying a life of this, uh, 15 years, it saves $700,000.
Yeah.
Even with the $91,000, it would still save us the, the overall, the $700,000.
So, uh, with that saving, is it going to be utilized to pay this off quicker, or determine that later?
That is, that's certainly an option. Uh, at this point, what, basically what would happen is we, if we were to move forward with the bond sale, then we could come back and either through the budget process or even just through council action prior to that, we could decide what to do with those dollars that we're not spending then. That you'll have lots of options on the table, so these dollars are currently appropriated out of the water and wastewater funds specifically, which means they are backed by rate payers. And so, your options would, there's a lot of options. So, I'll list a few. Could be returning that in the form of either buying down rates, um, it could be investing that into infrastructure needs, it could be putting it into a reserve, um, but ultimately that money would involve water and wastewater in some fashion. It wouldn't go into the general fund, because these are enterprise funds, um, so it would stay with those, with those, with those divisions.
So, if there, so if we, if we did it, let's say this $500,000. Give me a rough idea, but just not, not, how could the, how could, much quicker that would be paid off if we continue to pay that $500,000, if that's what the number is? Would that, would that cut that down by several years?
Oh, geez.
I mean, I know if you pay more on your house payment, it goes down pretty substantially.
Sure, sure. Um, because of the size of the loans, it, so yes, it would help to reduce the amount of time that we would have to pay these loans. Because of the size, uh, you're looking at, so it's five, if it's 500,000, um, you're looking at 500,000 over 15 years. And so the actual yearly amount that you're saving, um, likely would not expedite a long payment significantly, but it would probably, you could maybe pay it a year or two, and that's super guessing. I haven't gotten others to know that.
That's fine, I'll get that, okay.
I have [inaudible 00:06:24].
So, you're going to make this worse when we get all these options that you're coming up with.
I believe the saving is [inaudible 00:06:28].
We're going to change it. No, not that.
Who might be reminded of that?
Yeah, yeah, don't bring that up. Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I make a motion that we, uh, approve resolution number 29 for 2020. Most things, all favor say aye. Aye. Both? I'm [inaudible 00:07:00]. No names, one absent. Roll call. I'm not [inaudible 00:07:09]. Not [inaudible 00:07:11]. We don't have to like, [inaudible 00:07:15]. Figuring into the bond, correct? But if you're [inaudible 00:07:19]. No, I think it's the bond, but it's [inaudible 00:07:23]. So, part of the resolution also says that you're allowing Ray and I to sign, to sign [inaudible 00:07:24]. But, um, I don't know. What's your thoughts on? Yeah. Okay. Actually, I have [inaudible 00:07:30]. I have motion a second for resolution number 29 for 2020 for approval. Let's do it by roll call, please.
[inaudible 00:07:34].
Yes.
Council [inaudible 00:07:38].
Yes.
Council [inaudible 00:07:41].
Yes.
Council [inaudible 00:07:42].
Yes. Director [inaudible 00:07:45]. Well, Director [inaudible 00:07:48]. I have motion a second for the council committee. Uh, any other reports from the committees?
I would like to have everyone that's in this room to go by Sandy Park in the middle of the night, or not in the middle of the night, after the start, and take a look, it is amazing. And they've done a lot more concrete, and that's, that's been pretty good. Um, anyway, I think it's, it's really looking at action, so.
Any other thoughts, please? Um, nothing with mayor's report, city manager's report?
Uh, and some of you, you've got a flyer for the LOC, you left it in [inaudible 00:08:01]. So, 11:30, if you could, it's virtual, uh, if you're interested in attending, you could just stream it here, we could all, uh, sit in the comfort of our own council chambers. Um, you could also stream it from home or wherever you would have any access. Uh, if you're interested, you have the register. So, if you're interested in that, let me know, uh, I'll make sure that you get registered. Um... Council training and goal setting session. We're way ahead of our date here, but was hoping we could take a look historically. It always seems to fall on Valentine's Day weekend, and, uh, you know, for some of us that have been, uh, [inaudible 00:08:21]. So, uh, we're just kind of looking ahead. We were hoping that staff at council would be, just look ahead and be agreeable to, uh, we can [inaudible 00:08:22]. That's a possibility. Um, and again, we're, we're [inaudible 00:08:26]. So, a couple months ahead, we're looking at that, so. Um, other than that, uh, as we're moving into the [inaudible 00:08:39]. The mayor will be assigning new committees, so you can probably contact him on that. And coming into January, it would be, uh, also three years, we could look at mayor, mayor [inaudible 00:08:40]. Well, um, and that's what I've got. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Are they, on the, on the workshop dates for, uh, [inaudible 00:08:52]. Are they going to tell us what the agenda is on those three days?
It, it, the [inaudible 00:08:59]. Oh, I see.
Yeah. All right, gotcha. Okay. I would highly recommend anybody who's [inaudible 00:09:00]. I don't have [inaudible 00:09:01]. I don't have [inaudible 00:09:02]. Department director's report. Any director who wants to bring anything up? Any council who wants a question for the department directors? Me, uh, [inaudible 00:09:15]. Nothing on council business, good or bad. Nothing else, we will adjourn now. [inaudible 00:09:20].